And acknowledge your authority over all things, and we pray for the peace that you alone can bring, Father. Your shalom. We pray all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. I got the meeting minutes from December thirteenth. Do you gentlemen have a chance to look those over?
Yeah, I did not see any changes.
Nor did I. All right, look for a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold. All on paper.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There was a highway meeting this morning at the Harbor Garage. People present, Michael Taylor, Nathan Gabhart, Ron Arnold, and Chris Winkler. Things discussed is snow removal over the past winter storm, employees, seven hundred east, two hundred north closure. Anything else on that, gentlemen?
No, I think that was it.
All right, moving forward, Highway Department. Chris, morning.
Morning. I guess the only thing I've got to report on a little bit is our snow removal. So, so we worked over the holiday. We have ten trucks, and a lot of people want to compare us to, I've kind of told the commissioners a little bit about this. You know, of course, you get on social media and Facebook, and people how the roads, oh, the highway looks really good, the state roads, but the county roads look like crap. And so, the county's got, or the state has twenty-nine thousand lane mile a road, and they've got over eleven hundred trucks that they use. So that's twenty-six lane mile per road, or per truck. The county, we've got eight hundred total miles, four hundred miles of that is blacktop, so that's eight hundred lane mile. We've got ten trucks that we put out. So we're doing about eighty miles per truck. So we've got a little bit more territory, responsibility for each truck that we put out there. And I actually think that we've done a, we've done a good job. They're not perfect. The salt works to about fifteen degrees, and then you're not really getting any, any melting out of the salt that you put down. And our guys, they, we had guys that were off for holiday, vacation. We got one guy that's getting ready to have a surgery, and they all volunteered to come in and work on the, on the holidays and on their days off. So that was good. But we, we did about, I think we put down about two thousand, two thousand ton of mix, which is about five hundred ton of salt, about what we put down. Five hundred ton of salt is thirty-two thousand dollars, just on this one event.
Amen.
We do, we do a salt-sand mixture. The sand helps the bounce and scatter for the salt, so you can see what you're doing. We also have a treated salt. Some of it's treated, some of it's treated, but it's still white, so that way we can see, see what we're putting down and where it's going. I just thought I'd let you guys know that. It was about two-hundred-and-thirty-five man-hours we put out there. And we're back at it again today. And then Thursday, it'll be fifty degrees, and there'll be a tropical storm coming in, and we won't have to worry about it anymore.
Now, my hat's off to you guys for sticking with it. We knew about that event way ahead of time. You guys were able to prepare and get everything out and going by.
Yeah.
You guys got it right up, five o'clock.
Yeah, we're going at five o'clock in the morning. And we're, you know, we don't go, I think the state does do twenty-four-seven. I don't have any twenty-mile stretch of highway that I could send a truck down. You know, I might have a six- or seven-mile stretch of road. Typical county roads are eighteen-foot wide. We got twelve-foot blades on them. So if you're going out in the middle of the night, that gives you six-foot clearance for the passing car, which is not much. So, and then if we did twenty-four-seven with our ten trucks that we had, we would need about another ten trucks. So, them trucks are probably a hundred and ninety, I think a hundred and ninety thousand dollars apiece. They're a little bit more than a, than a ton truck. I know a lot of the city agencies get to use ton trucks, which are a lot less expensive. But our trucks that we're using for the county today to do snow removal will be the same trucks that we're using Thursday to put rock back on, on the roads. So we'll break them down and put them together, and they've got to be a little bit more bigger than a ton truck, and, and that's their, it costs a little bit more. I think that's it. I'm there. I'm rambling, ain't I?
Aye.
No, great job. Great job.
I agree. Then on, I guess, the two hundred north and the seven hundred east, you got that on there?
Yeah, they're both on there.
I guess I'm done, and Ed can come up and talk about it.
Yeah, we'll talk about two hundred north first.
Okay.
Morning, Ed.
Morning, guys. Was in here two weeks ago, and by hindsight, I forgot to send that public notification for the adjacent landowners. We've sent that. I provided to Grant. I think we've met everything that we talked about the last time. Grant set an agreement out Thursday. Did you see the response I sent back?
Yeah.
Did you understand that?
That made sense. I, I, I just wanted them to be comfortable with the surety bond that's at DNR.
And they just, they just can't put a third party on a bond. So that's why he made those two revisions. But that's, that's pretty much it. We've, I think we've done what was, what came about at our last meeting a two weeks ago.
Yeah. Do you have anything else for Ed?
No, I just want to make sure we're clear that, you know, the road's to be closed in, for thirty months, you know, under Section Six, meaning in thirty months, the new road will be opened.
They'll still have a crossing across the road, but the road will be open.
Exactly, yeah. So we won't be starting on the road in thirty months. The road will be...
And I don't know when they'll go through that road. I'd like to think it'll be this spring.
But the road will be opened back to west traffic.
Yeah, possible. It won't be, we know it won't be paved. It'll be gravel and stuff.
That's, that's the way the agreement is stretched.
That's right. Asphalt would, in around thirty years.
Asphalt's the end of the third year after it's reopened.
Yeah. I didn't have any other questions.
Ronnie, anything else for Ed?
Well, my concern is what happened to seven hundred doesn't happen to two hundred, because of the location and what they're going to mine after that in the thirty months. I'm comfortable with that. And again, when you look at seven hundred, and I don't have all the information, I don't think anybody here does, but it seems like we were not as proactive as we could have been when the mines shut down. So now we just have to see where it falls.
Yeah. I think we're going to discuss that here in a minute with Chris, too, so.
Chris, were you able to get a hold of Costello?
Oh, no, I had no issues.
All right, so there's no other questions. Have a motion to sign this decree to close two hundred north.
Seven minutes.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold. All on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
What I've got here, Grant, is I've got three copies that are being signed by Matt, so that way everybody will have an original.
Sure. What I was going to do is maybe read the findings that's, that we have in there that's in the statute, just so.
That's fine.
That's on the record.
All right, Ed, yeah.
We'll want to, this is still redlined. We'll do a clean version for that particular page, just to make sure that that...
I've got the clean version.
Okay, you do. Good. Okay, the county is entering into this agreement conditioned on the following findings. In accordance with Indian Code eight-twenty-eight dash four, county relies on the application and submission of the information from REO. And the code section reads as follows, "Closing or relocating the said road is in the public interest and economic interest of the county. Closing or relocating the road will not unreasonably interfere with the flow of traffic on the county road system. Petitioner has filed with the county executive a surety bond in an amount fixed by the executive payable to the county, conditioned on the payment of damages, which the county may sustain or the restoration of the closed or relocated road. Plans for the restoration and reconstruction of the road, if the executive elects to have the closed or relocated road restored, are approved by the county executive, and the executive and the petitioner are required to sign a written document stating the terms of the agreement for temporarily closing the road."
Thanks, Brandon. If you got those other documents, what went on, Simon said?
I've got the, first, I've got the decree, road agreement. Petition is signed by us and road agreement pre-signed by you guys.
What should be the only difference here is that, that one was still redlined, but we are accepting their redline. I mean, it, it makes reference to the DNR surety bond.
Go ahead and sign it, Brandon.
Like, four-twenty-five or was? Nothing like that, also.
Right.
So we have a bond that...
We have a bond, and I'll have it if they come back after.
And we have a cause of action under the contract. We have a bond. If the coal company is paying what amount at the outset as well?
Eighty-two thousand.
And then the cash amount was what?
Eighty-two hundred.
I think it was, I think it was an amount.
It said in the, I said, I don't have the agreement.
So what they have to do at the beginning, Mark, is pay eighty-one thousand dollar bond. There is a, we'll give the cash amount, Chris. Two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollar.
Was that what you meant?
Two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars.
They paid two-forty within two weeks of the day. And then the bond itself was eighty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-forty dollars, and then there, there's a check that's held in escrow for eighty-one, eight thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars.
So to answer your question, we would have a cause of action against the coal company under this, have a bond in play. The surety bond with the DNR is, what, five-point-six million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
That doesn't relate to the roads. That relates to...
The actual... Yeah.
It relates to reclamation.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Good question. I mean, we talked about it at length, and these are the notes.
The last time we met. Basically, that five-point-two, five-point-six million dollars is held by the state. The way I understand it, it's held by the state to do the reclamation in the event they were to pull that. It's my understanding that the five-point-six million dollars is held by the state to do the reclamation at the end of the day, if, if they go belly up.
Ed, is that, is that right?
I don't have a crystal ball. Like I said last time, I don't have a crystal ball. I would assume it is, yes. I don't see that, but I don't have a dog in the hunt on seven hundred. No, I don't. No, I don't.
Ed, on the road, once it's put back, how much longer do you think you'll be mining that property?
South?
Yes.
I think they're, they're showing right now that there's pushing seven years of mining on the south side of that road. Five to seven, I guess, would be my...
So that crossing across the road would be there for, for seven years.
Now, on that road, I guess, Chris, when they go for that crossing, you know, if they go to, that crossing would always be gravel. I mean, there's no sense in blacktop because it wouldn't hold up. That's something we can cross in thirty months.
Yeah, the maps that, that we were shown showed two thousand and twenty-eight for that southern quarter, so, to the gentleman's questions, obviously, these are always a roll of the dice, as far as the coal mines go. I mean, we either inhibit the production of the coal. In this particular case, the road is on the northern, northern band of the, of the mining field. So thirty months, theoretically, they're still going to be mining further south, so that road will be usable in thirty months from now. It could go bankrupt right when they, they're in the middle of two hundred more. If that's the case, then it's going to be between us and the state to figure out, put that road back with five-point-seven million dollars, and who knows what the cost will be.
Well, it's, it's like when they shut that Billings Mine down. It's a different world. There's a market now for the coal. There wasn't a market then. And they've got, they've got a contract for three years with two one-year extensions, and they're in, one year into that for that mine.
Yeah.
But once again, we don't have a crystal ball. If you can predict that, we wouldn't be sitting here.
I guess.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that here in a minute.
Yeah, that's next on the agenda. Yeah, and obviously, two hundred north causes us quite a bit more anxiety than seven hundred east, because the audience doesn't have a map, but obviously, seven hundred east is a dead-end road, which obviously is less concerning. However, we do have landowners down there that we got to get access to. Two hundred north, obviously, is a very busy road. So we, obviously, obviously, we spent a lot of time talking about this behind the scenes with the attorneys. The DNR grant, that's between the DNRs and the coal mines. We really don't have much say in what that grant amount is. Hopefully, this all works out, that it's early enough in that phase.
Be both of those back.
We'll get that road back in thirty months, but it is a roll of the dice.
We've got this signed here, too, so. Long as you get heard that. This is what we had, just the, this is the redlined one.
Yeah. I know it's been closed my entire eight years.
I think we can try to get you a copy there.
Obviously, that was, you know, not a good ending for that coal mine.
All right, yeah. Make sure Sue Jenfree leave. All right, Chris, anyway, come back up.
If you gentlemen want to move closer to the mic, I'm assuming you're going to want to...
If you guys want to talk, you have to go up to the podium top.
Just so the audience can hear. I have a feeling you have a thing or two to say.
Well, I don't, I don't have much to say on seven hundred east. Like Ron said, we should have been more proactive when that mine went bankrupt and it closed down. I think that was probably the first time that's happened in Davis County. The mining's been a big industry, and I know Phil was a superintendent, and he just kept, somebody was always going to buy the mine out and take it over, and buy the mine out and take it over. And, and I think that maybe that's what he was waiting for to happen, which never happened. Honestly, I didn't even know that seven hundred east was a road. I thought it was a road to the Grabers, and then it stopped. I didn't even realize it was a dead-end road. But when this came up, and then, I think before Mark came to the last meeting, I'd heard about it, so I was like, I started looking into the bonds. What are our responsibilities? Who's pursuing this? Who's looking into it? And didn't really have any answers. There was nobody really pursuing it or looking into it. So with the commissioners, we thought we'd start digging into it. I don't really have much information to tell you, except for I did get a hold of Mike Costello, which he's the guy that is in charge of overseeing the reclamation and the bonding. He works for the bonding company and with the DNR, and they're working on a mine in Dewboys County, and I can't think of what the mine name is, Dewboys County. And that mine has been a bottleneck because they got into some bad water, and then the EMA got involved, or not EMA, the...
IDIM.
IDIM, yeah. IDIM got involved in that. So it's, took a long time. The next thing on his list, which is easy to say, is, is the Billings Mine. I had a couple of phone conversations with him. I couldn't get him here to this meeting, but he said he would be willing to come to the next meeting, answer questions, talk, talk to Grant and the commissioners, and to you guys about the process. I think it is a long process, and it should have been started a while back, but it wasn't. But we have got the contact person. We've got it started. I've stated to him that, even to Ed, you know, it doesn't matter the amount of money that you have in a surety bond, if nobody's going to execute them, and the state is not going to see them through in the DNR, and that the, the county in itself is not going to pursue that. And that said, I, I think that by my conversations with that Mike, that he sounds like an outstanding guy, and he's going to do what he can do. I can't promise you he'll put everything back the way it is, or supposed to be. I don't know all the details on that, but I'm, I'm working on it, and, and, you know, the county, our main goal is to get the road back. There, there's other issues outside of the road and the, the county's right of way, but I believe them were agreed upon with the contracts that the landowners had with the coal mine. But our focus is to get the road back, back to its previous state, and it will take a little bit of time and effort, but we, we have got it started.
My understanding, the bond's not been released, correct?
Correct. And like I said, he said it's the next mine on the, on the list. Had we not contacted him, would it be the next mine on the list? I don't know. But, but, you know, he, he assured me it was. And actually, with, you know, we bring Ed up, and I know they, we've been going back and forth with having dogs and fights and stuff like that, but Ed has got a lot of experience in the mining industry, and he's the one that's given me the, the contact information, and he has given me information to, for the county to move forward to get seven hundred east taken care of. You know, he did work for White Stallion, but just like I work for these guys, if they decide to shut a road down or quit, it's not on me, and I'm not trying to stick up for Ed, but he has helped us a lot trying to get in contact with the state and the people to get your road put back. That's, that's really all I, I know. I, I have reached out. I've made a contact. Been doing this for about a year and a half, maybe now, for Phil. I didn't take care of the coal mines before. I didn't know anything about it. He just kind of took care of it, so we're digging in deep, and Grant's helped, too. Grant's been helping with the legal aspect of everything. We'll do everything in our power to put it back, and if that don't work, I'm willing to take our forces and put it back. It's a major undertaking, but I heard Mark's got a lot of dirt on his ground that could be used. I don't know. Any questions, I guess?
If you have anything, just come up to the podium.
It is.
That's going to, that's what, that's our intent. The commissioners' intent are to get that road put back together and, and try to work with their surety bonds, and I don't know how far we'll get with the total reclamation, but, you know, there's money there to, to be spent, so some of that can be put back.
I mean, I realize it's going to take a while. Bankrupt, see anybody?
Yeah. Mark, if you want to come up here, please.
So he told you.
Just state your name when you get up there.
I get told I'm too loud all the time, anyway.
No, you're good.
No, I mean, I realize it's going to take a while and everything. I mean, the bankruptcy's not even finalized yet. I don't even know if anything's available to be done until the bankruptcy's finalized. Then I realize it's going to take time to get it through the state. My main concern is the can was just getting kicked down the road. We give them extension after extension after extension while they were still actively mining, and then after they filed bankruptcy, it just kind of got fallen completely off the map. Like you said, you didn't even know the road was a road. You know, as long as the ball's rolling and continues to roll, I will be satisfied. I realize, you know, I honestly don't look for that road to be owned up for two to three years at the, at the earliest, you know? And if Ed is willing to help, I think that's an advantage, too.
Yeah.
You've got to understand, I have nothing to do.
No, I've said if you're willing to help.
If these guys call me up and want something, want to know something, you're in trouble.
I'm not saying anything. I'm just saying if you're willing to help Chris and these guys, that's, you're a guy that's got the contacts. I don't. I mean, you're involved in that all the time. Yeah. It's kind of a two-way street. You're asking for something, and maybe your company can give you a little more back in return on this here. We all got to work together on it, or we won't get nothing done. We just kick the can down the road. So, I mean, that's my main thing, is I would just want the ball to continue to roll.
You, you have been more than patient, my thoughts, and I think we'll do whatever we can to correct the situation.
Well, in all honesty, Ron, there's reasons for that. Number one, I mean, that's my exit plan, is that land. That road very much affects the selling price of my land at some point in time.
Right.
When I get ready to sell my land. But, you know, when the road's closed...
Well, but when you bought the land, you had a road.
Exactly.
You no longer have a road, so what we can do...
And it devalues my back forty acres. I've been told by an attorney that it devalues my back forty acres by as much as forty percent, and my front forty acres by as much as twenty percent, because I have to give an easement across that to get to the other. And then back to, I'm surprised other landowners aren't in here complaining, other than John Murphy. You know, I know the Steiner property, the Lockmiller property, the Mattingly property, the Sheege property. Without that road, they're landlocked.
Yeah, if people would stop mining their land, it'd make our jobs a lot easier.
Maybe we'd have these lights off, though, because if you depend on solar and hydro, you're in trouble, is all I got to say.
It's the cycle of life.
Yeah, it sure is.
That's, you know, as long as the ball's rolling, I'm fine.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay?
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to talk? All right, moving on. Go ahead, Chris, you got something else?
No.
He's getting out of here.
I'll get those chairs. I'll meet you there.
Yep. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, I got the Odin Winkle public library proposal. Morning.
Morning. So, I don't know if y'all saw my email or not. I had sent out, I had sent out an email containing the support letters that we had received.
Yeah.
If y'all have copies of them, if you want them.
You guys see them all?
If anybody sees them.
I had a chance to look at them.
Yeah.
You had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
One of those, okay.
All right. So those were the support letters we had received, and if I can just take a little bit of your time. I don't want to take much time, but after our last meeting, I actually didn't sleep much that night, because thinking of like all these things, like I wish I would have said. But I would like to start with just a short story of, of my experience growing up and my access to library services. I grew up in Kalenburg for fourteen years, south of Kalenburg, though that's quite a, not a short drive to either library, whether it was the old library or the Washington Library. And then, when I was fourteen, we moved just basically across the line, south of Fifty, just off of Corning Road. So I spent my time, my, all my years growing up in that part of the county. And my mom always felt that it was important, and she always encouraged us to read. And at that point, and we still in that area, you still have to buy, purchase a non-resident card for either library to be able to get books, or to be able to access any of their services. And there were times that my mom couldn't afford the library card, because she had to decide whether she was going to buy groceries, or pay a doctor bill, or maybe buy clothes for us. And so during that time that we didn't have library, we had no access to their library. And looking back, I'm thinking, if that part of the county, if that whole county would have been, would have been supporting the library and paying part of the property taxes in to support the library, we wouldn't have ever had that lack in services. We would have always been able to go to a library and access books. Of course, back then, there weren't the digital resources from a lot... Of course, back then, there weren't the digital resources from a library that there are now. Libraries have come a long way in being able to provide digital access to libraries and to resources. So it's come a long ways. And I, and I think now even, when people come in and want to have to pay that, that non-resident fee, they think, oh, that's a lot of money at one time. But yet, if that was spread out over two installments of property tax, and they're already paying so much for property tax, that little born bit that's going to go to support the library is not going to make, they're probably not even going to notice any difference. So that's kind of my experience. And also, as thinking about it later, I'm think, I was thinking that as a library being a digital footprint in any county, because we have digital resources that anybody can access from anywhere in the county. If you have, there are some you can access without even being, without even having a library card, but then there are other resources. We have resources that go from everything, from practice tests to learning a new language, to homework help, to resume, being able to help someone with resumes. I mean, the digital resources are endless, that we can have access to. And because of that digital footprint, because of that digital access that we have, we can provide and we can help our county be a literate county. And being a literate county means also that when we are also a civil literate county. So libraries can have a big impact on a community. And, yeah. So those were just some thoughts that have been going through my head since our first presentation. Do you have any other thoughts or questions?
You don't have anything else?
Well, when you came last time, I asked people in the community that we were taxing supported by your support letters, it looks like they are, seems to be important to the school, so I have no issue.
Yeah, I think even the county council wrote us a letter to support it, Tom Schaefer. First, Tom lives up in that area too.
Yeah, I mean, he did what we asked. Me, philosophically, I think, you know, we'll disagree just a little bit. I mean, people can't, you know, twenty-five dollars, you know, in today's time, I don't think is rate limiting, and, and I mean, and I grew up on welfare, and so I think if people wanted access to the library, they have it. At the same time, I do know the libraries are kind of a dying industry, and the more that we can do to help sustain that, the better. Because I do think that that environment, obviously, is a very safe environment, very good environment for people to be in, kids to be in. You know, we are taking a hundred and four thousand dollars from people. And, and that's, that's a notice, that's a noticeable amount. Now, we spread it out, it's like ninety-four hundred, and it's not noticeable, and that's how we get to a point where we're spending fifty percent of our earned income on taxes today, because everyone takes just a little bit, right? And now, that little bit adds up. So we're doubling your budget, increasing your budget by a hundred and twenty percent, and we're increasing your hours by, you know, forty percent. So my hope is that those dollars are going to be invested into resources and spent wisely, which I trust you that they will. And you've done what we have asked, and, and, and I would, I don't have any questions, I'd be supportive of, of moving forward.
I mean, the, the increase in hours, we can definitely increase more hours.
You're going from twenty-five to forty-two, is what this.
Yeah, but that, that was just an estimate, that was.
Oh, sure, sure.
And, of course, we have this whole next year, if we go forward with the, with the resolution, we have at least a year to come up with a plan to move forward, and how we want those hours, where we want them, and.
Well, my expectation is going to be at least forty-two hours, you do what you need to do, but since you're doubling the budget, obviously, we would expect more access for the constituents, based off what you have presented, so. So, yeah, I would, I'd be in favor of making a motion to approve.
That a motion?
That's a motion.
Grant, you got something real quick?
Yeah, I did have a question, Susan. In looking at this code, I think it's thirty-six dash twelve dash five, and it makes reference to the legislative body and the township trustee. And so this is really just the first step in the process. You're going to have to file a petition with them as well, because those are the affected taxpayers. Is that correct?
Uh, there was, we can, what could have went, what my understanding is, we could have went either way. We can do, there were two different, two different ways, or two different paths that we could have taken. The one would have been to get the township trustees, which we did get letters of support from the township trustees, or come directly to, or do a petition, sorry, do a petition of getting people in the county to support it. That was one way we could have done it. The other option, so there was like two different options, and the other option was to come directly to the, the commissioners.
On, on the application, it says written resolution of county legislative body or petition process.
Yeah, so it could have been, it could have been either way.
Either way.
But I'm staying out of this part, I'm not going to turn.
I'm not turning either.
I mean, that was the, the, I mean, this, the attorney for the state library would have agreed, and actually, there have been, a county just recently did it this way, and it was acceptable.
It's, it's generally a requirement to give notice to the impacted taxpayer. If, if they're wanting to move ahead on this, I have no issues with it, I just want us to connect with the attorney for the library association and make sure it's or and not and.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And, I mean, my understanding is that it is or. In talking with the Department of Local Government, we have to have the, we needed to have the resolution signed by the end of this year, before our budget can take place in 2024. That gives the whole, a year for the, the constituents to know what's happening. So it gives them a forewarning of what's going to take place in 2024.
This is the first step in the process. They can still remonstrate, as it says underneath the statute, okay?
Yes. And it gives them a whole year to do that.
So what you're doing is, is starting the process, is that correct?
Yes, basically, yeah. And so we have, yeah, all next year before anything actually takes place. But this step is, helps us get that going.
I'm still fine moving forward to, we got a motion on the table by Nathan, you have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
My original resolution for you, need to, the middle section.
Let's sign it. Yeah, let's sign it. Yeah, right there, we're going to sign it.
Thank you gentlemen so much for your time.
Hey, thank you, Susan.
Appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda is economic development. Brian, morning.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good.
Good? Got anything for you here?
Hey, thank you.
Yes? I'm sorry, it's lacking you. You're good, all right. There you go. Hey, I will be very brief. I know you have.
Yeah.
Very busy agenda today. Yeah, is this going to be? Yeah, yeah, wait there. Yep. I won't start, start it up.
Thank you.
So yes, good morning. I, I wanted to start off, today I want to talk with you all about a project that is very near and dear to my heart. It's one that I feel like put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into. It's the Commons of Davies County. It's a project in downtown Washington, I'm sure you've all heard of it. What I'd like to do, just to start off, and again, I will be brief, is just highlight a video that our intern, L Stowers, did for us in partnership with Washington, Washington High School and their radio and TV class. So, just quickly highlights the project and talks with a few individuals that are excited about, about the prospect, so. I will fire that up.
The Commons of Davies County is a new signature community project for Davies County that transforms empty lots in downtown.
Let's pause that. Okay.
You got a volume control on here?
Yeah, does that work? I hope so. If you're not awake, if you weren't awake before, you are now. Okay, let's try here. Yeah, okay, that's better.
The Commons of Davies County is a new signature community project for Davies County that transforms empty lots in downtown Washington into a vibrant and community-centered gathering space, along with historical Main Street in the heart of downtown. The conceptual design provides a space that can be used for community-wide events and programming. The current plans illustrate a variety of spaces within the park, including the areas for community gatherings, reflection, and social activities.
I think it'll be a great place for families to hang out, to listen to musicians, to have the old market downtown and bring people together. And that's one of the things that makes Davies County great.
Um, my opinion about the New Commons is I think it will be good for our community. I think it will definitely be good for our business. We have a drawing every Saturday night, and I think that it will be great for people to be able to have a place to sit outside. There's also the opportunity for concerts and different events that we could even host out there. But, yeah, I definitely think it's.
Suzie Smith, the owner of A Wonderful Life on Main Street in Washington, said, "I think the community will be great for downtown Washington, and it will be a wonderful place to house many events that take place in our community." The New Commons is going to affect A Wonderful Life by drawing many people to Main Street and allowing my business to flourish and be seen by many people.
The New Commons project, I am looking for lots of events. I want to see lots of events. I don't want an empty space sitting there. I want to see live music, I want to see shows, I want to see art shows, I want to see something that brings something to Washington.
I think the Commons will be a great thing for Davies County. It'll give, give the people somewhere to go and gather together and support their own and support local.
So, so, yeah, that was just a quick video that was put together by our intern. It was kind of a capstone project for her this semester. So I, I think she did a pretty good job with, with the high school class and with, with Duane Shake's help. So you all have a slide deck, can we switch to that? And I won't go through the entire thing, right? The first few pages are really just the renderings of the space. At a very high level, what we are looking at, it's a three-quarter block area in downtown Washington. You, so you saw the existing conditions in the video. It's the J. Myers parking lot at the corner of Main and Third in downtown Washington. It's the old Hayes Automotive property just south of, of the J. Myers parking lot. And then directly to the east, it's the old Fields Laundromat that was just removed in the past year. So, as you saw in the video, it's, it's not the most sightly area, right, in downtown Washington, but the plan is to rejuvenate that entire area with this plan that you have in front of you. So we worked very closely with a number of partners over the past year, two years, on this project. Most notably, the city of Washington, Mayor Dave Rhodes, the city council have been incredible acquiring the Fields Laundromat property. We have the Knights of Columbus, who was the first to dive in with three hundred thousand dollars towards this project, which has been amazing. It's helped us with the design of the space, and it's going to help us with some, some down, a down payment on, on the construction loan that we're looking at. We've also had the, our community foundation has helped us, is helping us with a fundraising campaign that is not public at this point. We've had a number of conversations, private conversations with area businesses, but we are looking to launch that here right after the first of the year publicly, right? So.
I think you just did.
I think I did, just did, that's right, yeah. But we haven't done a lot of, of outreach, I guess, marketing on that side of things. We hope to start that after the first of the year. But even with the, the number of one-on-one conversations, I feel like we've been, been very successful on that front. And then we've had the Davies County Community Foundation, the Community Foundation Alliance, which is helping us with a grant towards this as well. So there have been a number of hands on the project. We worked with a variety of stakeholders, really all of those folks, those organizations that I just mentioned, to help design the space. The project has ebbed and flowed, right? It's changed, it's, it's expanded, it's contracted. A lot of that from a programming standpoint, in terms of what is needed on the space, what the public wants to see on the space. And then also from the standpoint that we doubled the size of the site with acquiring the Fields Laundromat property. So we were at a point at where we finished up the design, and the project was put out for public bid from the city of Washington at the end of October. Bids came back, we received two bids from, one from Tabor Owens Construction, right here in Washington, the other from Danco Construction out of Evansville. The bids came in at about three point one million from Tabor Owens Construction and three point five from Danco, so the low bid was Tabor Owens. The city of Washington, the city council decided to move forward with that bid, subject to financing, at their December twelfth meeting. And this, I had planned to be on your agenda on the thirteenth. We had a few things changed, and I think Nathan mentioned at the beginning, my daughter was sick, so we changed up a few things, but, and knowing that you would have this meeting here before the end of the year. But, you know, before we really get into the financing, just at, at a high level, right, what we're trying to do here is create an environment in Davies County that is a great place to live, work, play, and stay, right? And, and we all, we all live here, right? We all work here. But the goal is to continue to help expand Davies County, attract population, retain the talent that we have here currently. From an economic development standpoint, and talking with the many area businesses here in Davies County in the region, those that we are hoping to attract to the area workforce is challenge number one, right? So focusing on housing, focusing on broadband, focusing on public amenities such as this, really focus on that livability aspect of Davies County. And with Washington being essentially a third of the population of Davies County, the county seat and the largest municipality, we felt that this was a great location. We did dub it the Davies County Commons as a unifying factor. This is a project for all of Davies County. Everyone in the city of Washington pays a Davies County tax in addition to a city of Washington tax. And as the county seed, as I mentioned, and hub in many ways of economic activity, we felt it made sense here, here in this area. Especially in light of here within the past month, we had the major announcement from the Westgate One Microelectronics Campus, where we're looking at bringing five hundred and fifty new high-wage jobs to the region. All of those folks, many of those folks, looking, that will be looking for a place to live, right? And projects like this are going to attract those kinds of individuals, right? We know, we've seen it in our area communities, Jasper, Vincent's, Bloomington, Bedford, where they are investing in quality of place, they're investing in amenities, they're investing in their downtowns to create vibrant spaces that people want to live in, right? So this is something that's very important to me in the long, long-term game of, of winning on the economic and community development landscape, continuing to grow Davies County and expand the tax base. So with that being said, that's kind of the, the philosophy around the project, right? But these are the costs that we have, the funds, the funds spent thus far. I mentioned ROI helped us with the site acquisition, and that's demolition as well. This number does not factor in, and Ron and I had a conversation about this, the Hayes Automotive property that we purchased from the school. So I, I did miss that in that two hundred and forty-five thousand. Design fees spent, we've spent about a hundred and thirty thousand in design fees, remaining design is about forty thousand there. And then these are some of our project costs that we're anticipating. Obviously, there are some that are yet to be determined, but with the base. determined. But with the base bid from Tabor Owens, and that includes the entire project, right? That's that 3.1 million. Contingency of 10%, it's about 315,000. The city is looking at construction management possibly and is having those conversations. Interest, yeah.
Tabor Owens, they do construction management, don't they?
They do, they do. Yeah, but with, with them being the contractor, you could
Yeah, it could go sideways, but
Yeah.
I don't know if they could build that into, into their bid.
It could be. I just, I wonder. And this is not my area of expertise.
It's not my, I mean, it's, it'd probably be a conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Just, just asking.
We, and we've talked with Jeff about it. Obviously, you know, Jeff being the local contractor, very close to, to all of us, had those conversations. He feels there are some, obviously, there are less concerns with it being a local group.
Right.
We know where Jeff lives, right? So we trust him. He's, they're gonna do, they do great work. But with a project of this scale, I, the mayor and I feel there needs to be some level of accountability there. And then interest expense, which Baker Tilly is working on for us at the moment, and we'll get to that here in the next slide. And then I think an interesting aspect, the last point on this in terms of the project costs, is it's one thing to build a project like this, it's another to maintain it and keep it in a great state of, of repair, right? You know, it's, it's one thing to build a project like this and not be thinking about what happens in the 50 years following, right? And I think that's something where, when we were talking about this project initially, we went to several communities, Huntingburg being one of them, which has a project very similar to this, that we drew a lot of inspiration, their Market Street Park. And we took a lot from their playbook in pulling together the capital stack for this project and, and our approach on this project. And one thing that they had, that they worked, they worked with area businesses, they worked with, obviously, the city of Huntingburg took the lead in this, but they established a maintenance fund with their community foundation. That was an endowment that, you know, they, they used the interest off of that endowment to support ongoing maintenance into perpetuity for the park, which I think is really interesting. And it helps offset the Parks Department's budget, right? And make sure that they have the resources to keep it in top-notch condition. Next slide, please. And sorry, it's a little hard to put it in front of you. So this is the capital stack that we are, we've put together for this project. So the Knights of Columbus, I mentioned their commitment. We have a 100 estimate. On the 12th, the city council agreed to move forward with $2 million in funding towards the project. And they're going to be taking that out of their economic development income tax. That's $400,000 per year for five years. Our request in front of you today would be from Davies County of $150,000 per year for five years totaling $750,000. And then two corporate sponsors that we are not going to name at this point, but will be announcing those in the coming month. The first, well, both of them doing $250,000, but the first over five years, the second over three years. And then you have our GIFT 7 grant, which was from the Davies County Community Foundation, the Community Foundation Alliance. And then the Our Common Heritage Campaign, in addition to those two large corporate sponsors, we have secured about 62,000 in pledges from, from area businesses. And like I said, that's without, you know, formally marketing that campaign, which we do plan to do just after the first of the year. So with that, that brings us to total funds of 3.6 million, which we feel with the 10% contingency and with the interest expense will be, be more than enough to take care of those needs. That doesn't heap into consideration construction management or that maintenance fund. Oh, next slide, please. So this is a bit about our timeline. It kind of covered that. These bids, the bid from Tabor Owens is good for 60 days from date of bid opening. So that's essentially the end of January. We have until February 1st on that. Here Tilly and with Barnes and Thornburg instructuring this. At the end of October, Baker Tilly worked with us and the city to send out an RFP to area, area banks. The most competitive proposal that came in was Forest Savings Bank out of Odin. They came in with a non-taxable rate of 2.94% and a taxable rate of 3.95%, which we all know the interest market right now, that's very competitive. And I know they are looking to get aggressive on this project, which we very much appreciate and are looking at helping us in that way, which is very helpful. That's, it's a minimum of two, three percentage points less than any of the other proposals we got. So very much helps us in the financing. Under the current proposal that we have and per the city's preferences, and this is how, you know, the Economic Development Foundation was set up, I know Ron can dive into this as well. But DCEDF, the foundation would borrow the funds in service of pass-through for the project. So we would borrow the funds, and then we would have funding agreements between the city, the county, hopefully, and our other funding partners, which we already have. And the funding would come in through us, then we'd make the debt service payments. It'd be a short-term, five years, helping us on minimizing the amount of interest that we're paying. So next slide, please. So just some next steps and then open it up for discussion, but we're going to be working, are working closely with Baker Tilly and Barnes and Thornburg. We should have the updated interest expense at the beginning of this week, really anytime, from Baker Tilly. The county is the last funding approval. We did have, like I mentioned, the city, we do have those private sector support contributions pledged already, and we do hope to, we do plan to continue to expand upon that. And then we'll be working with you all and the city, depending on, on your action today, to execute funding contracts in alignment with a selected financing structure. So making sure that the payments come in, we structure the payments that make sense for the city and the county, executing contracts with Tabor Owens. Hopefully by the end of January is really at the timeline that we're on. So with that, sorry, I know I said I'd be brief, but I tried to cover a lot there. What questions do you have? What comments, thoughts? Anything at all?
I guess the first question I had, I don't remember what, what the county said we would pay when we first started. Was it 400,000?
400, yeah, when we were talking about
Because I'm saying this is a couple of years ago.
Yeah, when we were talking about just half the sites, that's the Hayes Automotive and the Jay Myers parking lot. And that's without us having any of the design, design done, just really conceptual ideas. And honestly, borrowing some cost estimates from Huntingburg, we thought about 400,000. The project has since doubled with acquiring the adjacent property and, and, you know, other factors coming in, right? But, but yes, 400,000 is where we were initially at. Yeah, in terms of conversations.
Right. Then have you, have you had the same conversation with the county council?
We have, yes. So, so I was supposed to be, like I mentioned, on the agenda, on your guys' agenda here a couple of weeks ago. Was on the agenda for Wednesday, the following Wednesday, with the county council. Given the timeline that we're on, I really couldn't wait another month. We would only have two weeks to finalize contracts and everything. So we did get contingent approval from the county council to move forward with the request. But obviously, it's, it's the commissioners, it's your, at your guidance with the edit. So that's what we would be proposing.
Okay, out of the edit.
Yes, yes, out of the economic development income tax. That's, so to my understanding, edit generates about 1.5 million per year. So this would be about 10% of that edit over the next five years, which I feel is, is very reasonable. So.
Do you have anything else?
I, I think it's a great idea. I know it's taken a long time to spin it together. Appreciate your work on it. Have you decided what you're gonna do with Mr. Myers that sits right up there on the corner?
We, we are, Jay is gonna have a very nice spot in the commons. We haven't fully designed that, but he, he is gonna be incorporated into the project. So, yes.
Well, we had looked at maybe the core center right there on the
Oh, yes.
highway in Van trees, nice little overhang for him. He gets covered this time of year.
Open, open to any and all suggestions, but I feel, you know, Mary Smith with our community foundation and, and I, we've talked a lot about that, you know, and, and I feel it's really neat that we're talking about this project on this very site, because I didn't know Jay, but a lot of folks that did feel that a project like this is very much one that, that he would have been a part of, right?
Jay had a vision for the community that I don't think has been matched yet.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Take care of Jay.
Yep, that is the plan.
And that'll be questions?
Questions? All right.
I, I would ask if it's okay with you, just if you are amenable to it, a motion to move forward with the request. And then what we will do, like I said, is follow up with you all with an actual agreement that specifies the funding. In talking with the city just this past week, I think what they are looking at is two installments per year. So for them, it's $400,000 total per year, a $200,000 payment in February, and then another $200,000 payment in July or August. So that's, you know, the city, the county can follow suit, whatever it might be, but we can talk about that moving forward. So.
Did you happen to say something about the county would be the last dollars in? Did you say that?
No, well, so, so the county, the county is the last approval that we're seeking for, for the capital stack that we had. Now, something, when I was at the county council meeting, that was a question that was asked, hey, you know, there are a lot of unknowns. Let's say you don't use the entire 10% contingency. Or, you know, in conversations with Jeff Owens, he was saying, hey, I think we can even bring that 3.1 million dollar down with specking, replacing some specs, those kinds of things, and not changing the quality of the project. That is something we're talking with Baker Tilly about, how do we structure in, in Barnes and Thornburg? How do we structure those agreements to where if we don't need all of that, we give those funds back or we reduce the last payment or whatever it might be. And we make sure that that's equitable amongst all of our funding partners. Yeah, yeah.
And hopefully you get more sponsors at the end of the day before the project's done.
Yeah.
I'd feel better about that.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, honestly, so we have, we have $560,000 that's been committed from the private sector towards this project, which I think is, is astonishing. It's amazing. It's not a, it's not a private sector function, function to provide parks and recreation and amenities such as this, right? It's, it's a local government function. So I feel like the fact that we've leveraged that is, is something to be celebrated. We can, we absolutely have the ability to leverage more. The business community that we've talked to has been incredibly supportive, has been excited about this, has said, hey, these are the kinds of things we want to see in a community. It gets us excited about continuing to invest and grow. And it gives us the ability to invest and grow because it's going to make your community more attractive to my workforce. So yeah, those, those conversations will continue.
All right. I guess I look for a motion to move forward. You guys still wish to be buy payments, $150,000 from the county, with a net total of $750,000 for the commons project?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great project. I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabart. Second, second, my Ron, all, all in favor? Motion carries.
Perfect. Thank you all so much. We'll be in touch. One thing I would ask, and this is up to you all to decide. We, so we are having regular meetings with Barnes and Thornburg, with Baker Tilly to set up the financing structure. I would love to involve the county in that. So if one of you wants to participate in those calls, I'd be happy to include you on that. The last one I did send to Matt Meredith, president of the county council, as well. He wasn't able to make it, but I did send him a summary email following. So I, I'll let you all decide how you want to do that.
Serve on the board.
You're on the board.
Makes sense that it would be you.
Sure, great idea.
We'll just pass the buck right now.
Yeah, I'm already there anyway.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Yeah, Nathan's been phenomenal to work with on the microelectronics project and, and with obviously our board and serving on, on the executive committee. So thank you, Nathan. I appreciate that. I'll loop you in. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Brian. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, we got the Health Department, new full-time employee, Kelly Streeter. Morning. What's that? Running way over, huh?
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Brought my whole crew with me today.
This gentleman's longer, longer, longer.
I know. So I don't know if you have, I emailed late last week, a packet here. Yeah, I see, I see one.
Yeah.
So just to give you a synopsis, we have, we have remaining grant money left over that we had, we will not be using, and it's to be put back to the services of the Health Department. One of those grants was our COVID testing activities. We have approximately $70,000 left. And we're gonna end testing December 31st, thankfully. We still will have a vast amount of free take-home kits. But aside from that, we've been reevaluating our, our plan moving forward. And the State Department of Health has also put together core services that they wish that all of county health departments proceed with, and that is community health. Community health is a broad term, so to say, but it's pretty much partnering with all of our community partners that are wanting to stand up and provide services to the underserved. Not just underserved, but broad. We have a, a large population of immigrants here. We have a large low-income population. We have a large Amish population. So really getting out in the community and building relationships with these individuals that don't know what we provide, that don't know who we are, and creating that long-lasting synergy. So we have many resources available to us now. And moving forward, we really hope to change the face of the Health Department and move mobile. So to do that, we really need people. And I had filled out an additional appropriation to the county council, I'll be going next year, that we appropriate these funds to take an existing individual in our department. And I, I don't know if you all knew kind of who we were of late, so I did give you an organizational chart.
We sort of knew who you were.
Well, to, to really know our staff.
No, I appreciate the chart.
Break us down as, as who all are in the Health Department and what our functions are. And we have been very lucky throughout the course of the last few years that we weren't searching for help. People really wanted to come work with us. So we had some contracted staff that have, have been amazing. One of those is now a part-time support staff, and another one of those contracted persons with a vast background in marketing and other, other outreach programs. We would like to bring her, take these grant funds and bring her on as a full-time community health worker. Put together a draft job description based upon Indian Department of Health, as well as many other counties. And we already have many projects in queue for 2023. And I don't have a crystal ball either for the Health Department, just like the coal mine, but what I would like to, what I would like to think is in 2023, as I'm sure you all are aware, our legislature is going to be presented with a very large report from the governor's Public Health Commission. And they're going to be looking at core services and funding those services at a very secure set of funding. No more of these grants that we don't know if we're gonna continue. And we believe in 2024, moving forward, community health will be funded through legislative, through basically legislative funding. So this will be one year, and we, we're hoping it will continue through future funding, but I still want to make you aware, this is, this is grant-funded. We are, we are aware of that. The individual will be aware of that. And I really just, it's so much we could talk about, but I, I wanted to bring it before you all, before I went to council, obviously, and just say again, thank you for all of your support during these last few years, and we're really glad to get past the pandemic moving forward.
I think everybody is.
Absolutely. You have any questions?
Get through this first year, if the grant funding isn't in place, do you see the position continuing?
It, it's, no. Unless, again, another, another thing that we have been very lucky with is our nursing staff have worked tirelessly and our billing agent, she is, we, we have a source of revenue always that we could look at in the budgeting process. But right now, if this, after 2023, the legislative, our legislature doesn't see it fit to fund it, as they are currently, then it'll be one year. We already have one person on staff, Mandy Ash, that is our community health coordinator, and we would, we would go back to that, that main position instead of this worker.
Anything for Nathan?
Um, no, I mean, I guess, I mean, it says we're looking for someone who can speak Haitian, Creole, Spanish, and English.
Well, it, it says that's preferred. It would be nice to have an individual that was bilingual.
I guess my, my specific question is, I guess, which, which culture are we, are we focusing on?
In the beginning, Hispanic.
Hispanic, okay.
We already have partnerships with multiple community entities, and we already gonna start going to the Haitian, or to the Hispanic community. And our, our person that we're looking at bringing And our, our person, um, that we're looking at bringing this on, she has a, some brief abilities, but she's wanting to expand that. And we've already met with Luis and they're getting grants to um, our one-year goal is to go out and be a cornerstone with the Hispanic community. Our five-year goal is a stronger presence with the Haitians. It's a big, a lot of barriers still.
Interesting. We've seen Haitian families every week. The interesting thing that we've noticed in the last year, um, our Haitians, our new Haitian families speak Spanish because they're coming from Chile and El Salvador. So they moved from Haiti to Chile to El Salvador, and now they're in Washington. So, um, it's been very interesting, um, to have Haitians come in and speaking very fluent Spanish. That's been the majority of our new Haitian families come in. So it's, it's been interesting. Yeah.
And as far as physical space, um, office space?
Currently, we can absorb it, what we have now. She'll be working a lot outside of the building, but she also has a desk and a computer currently.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Any ask Ron?
No.
Yes, we'll look for a motion to approve a full-time employee through a grant. As long as the grant's intact.
Yep, still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ronald Arnold, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm sure you know Andrea Brown, but I want to introduce you to her. Mallory Sworchen Truber had, um, left us in the last year. And we were very lucky to be able to recruit and bring on Andrea as our full-time public health educator, as well as nurse. She's here for the first time.
Hey Andrea.
Hello.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Um, what, one thing that Mallory had started was the Baby and Me Tobacco-Free Program. And I think Kelly said she put the, our contract agreement, it's a one, year-to-year, so it goes from January 1st to December 31st. I think she started it back in 2017. And so it's just time to renew that again. We currently, and I did the training this year after I started, so I've taken over the program. Kathy kind of did it temporarily for a little bit, um, for us. We currently have two moms enrolled, or future moms. They're both due in January. And it's a program, it's a, um, that we really like and want to keep going, so. Any questions on the contract?
I don't think so. Do you guys have anything on that?
Just said you secured funding for '22. Is there funding for '23?
I mean, it's been a pretty good program since you guys enacted it, so.
So it's a 20, $2,200?
Yes.
Is, is that, so if we had like four moms or 10 moms, is it still $2,200?
Yeah, I think it's the same amount, no matter how many we have.
Is there a reason we only have two moms in it?
It kind of seems to go in phases from what I've seen, um, looking back. It's, it's based on a referral program, so like First Choice Solutions can refer people to us, the OBGYN office, the WIC office, um, welfare, anybody can refer.
And they all know that?
Yes. And I actually just recently, after I took over the program and made up new referral forms, I took forms out to everybody. That was just probably a couple of months ago. So I just need to keep probably in contact with all of them and, you know, remind them frequently.
Maybe there's not enough smoking moms, so maybe it's a nice problem.
That would be amazing, but.
That's not bad.
But.
I'd like to see the program continue, so.
Okay.
Got a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ronald Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thanks Andrea. Kathy?
CPR. So in the past, we have done CPR training for county employees. We have not had it since we're in the new building. We do have AEDs on every floor of this building. So I think it would be a good time to do a refresher with all county employees. Usually in the past, we've traveled out to the Highway Department. They have an AED as well out there. Um, just refresh them. It would not be a certified course. If they need a certified course for their position, we'd be happy to offer that too. But currently, it's just a overview, how to do an incident report, um, how to use the AED and, uh, basic CPR.
I don't have any issue with that at all.
I think it'd be a great refresher, yeah.
So they can attend on county time. It'd be about an hour. We have some dates we picked out, and the training will be down in the basement.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be up to their supervisor to approve it. Um, so obviously, I'd go up through the chain of command.
And, yeah, but I don't have any, that, want to make a motion on that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the CPR training.
On county time.
On county time.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ronald Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks Kathy. All right, Buffalo Trace Annexation. Lauren. Hey, Dan, this morning. Thanks, ladies.
Morning. Um, as you all know, the commissioners are in charge of the precinct lines. That's why we're here this morning. So Buffalo Trace happened earlier this year. Um, it's a section where they're building homes. No one lives there currently. But we need to get that precinct line moved so that they're in the city limits, so that they can vote in municipal elections when people start to move there. So that was our first thing.
Yeah, I tried to look at the map because it was dark, so I couldn't see and see exactly what it was. How far off is that line on the precinct? To get the line, get those
How far out?
Yeah.
It's not a very big section.
Okay, I know, it was, I, I tried to look at the map and it was really dark, so I couldn't see it, so I was just asking a question.
It's a section that's, I don't know if you can see this, it's down on Washington 15 in this area, but it's not a very big section. But they are looking at building homes there, so there will be some people that are. And then the second thing is, um, after the 2020 census, we had to look at commissioner, or excuse me, at council lines to make sure that they were in deviation. And the county was, so we were fine there, but the city was out, so they had to move there. So as we know, 2023 is a municipal, so it has to be done before that happens. So they have given us a, an annexation, or excuse me, an ordinance, 27/2022, which I think you have a copy of.
Yes.
Where they have moved their city council lines to make them in deviation. So at that point, we have two choices on our level. Um, we can either split precincts and say, um, Washington 10, this part of it votes in this council district, and this part votes in this council district. Or we can move the precinct line so that this entire precinct votes in this district. And that makes it a lot easier for us and for voters if the whole precinct votes in the same council district. So we're just looking at moving the lines. It only affects three of the precincts, but we're looking at moving the lines so that they go right along with those councils.
And that'll still keep it within parameters for the county?
Yes, yes.
I know, Janice worked on that quite a bit there, we talked about it last time, but as long as we're within the parameters, I don't have any issue with that.
I don't either.
No. Hey.
No problem.
So I got two things here before us. Is there everything you had, Lauren?
Yes.
This order deals with both of those items.
It does, yes.
Yeah, so that'll take care of the Buffalo Trace.
We got a sample from the Indian Election Division, then Grants Office typed it up to make it perfect for what we need in.
Okay. I guess we'll look for a motion to change the precinct lines. What, see if it was for what precincts were there again?
It is Washington 10, 12, and 6. The little sections of those will move
Okay.
to other precincts.
I guess I'll look for a motion to change the precinct lines in Washington 6, 10, and 12. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ronald Arnold, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And I'll just need you to sign that order if you would, so I can get that forwarded to the Election Division.
Morning, Janice.
Good morning.
Hey, Dan, this morning.
Good. How are you guys?
Good. You got Southern Business Machines and Imaging?
I do. Do you guys have copies of everything?
Yes.
This is, um, our Southern Business Machine Service Agreement that we have this, um, in regard to our postage machine. And it runs from January 17th, 2023, to January 26th, 2024. The price of it did go up some, and I knew that it was going to. They had, um, I had sent out a message. I don't know, it was sometime around budget time, asking about the price of it, but it did go up some. Um, but this is what we have as in order, you know, for our postage machine and everything. And our office uses the postage machine, and we also have it set up so that the courts can use it as well. And we, we have accounts on there so that they can kind of tell how much. That was kind of a problem before, but we've now set it up so that they can tell how much postage they're using.
Which, which account?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's, runs from 117/23 to 126/24. Don't have any more questions on that?
No, I do not.
If not, look for a motion to approve, uh, this contract with, uh, SBM Service Agreement.
Still moved.
$1,690. You got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ronald Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have an actual contract to sign up there? One signature. Thanks, Janice.
The other contract I have is one that I actually have not presented this before. It was on that Imaging Office Systems. We purchased a ScanPro device that was for, um, just to read our microfilm because our other thing had broke. So this was, this is to do this for the next year. I think there was one year in, in the purchase of it, and now this is to take care of the next year, so. Um, but this one I had not presented to you guys before, so it's new.
Got a contract there?
I do.
Let Grant look it over real quick.
Do you guys have a copy of?
Um, I don't. It's in the packet. I guess I didn't look at that one. I've got it right here. Please pull it up here.
Have it, okay.
Janice, this is for $695, and it goes from April 2023 to March of 2024. Is that right?
Yes.
And what's the purpose of the Imaging Services, or Imaging Office Solution, Imaging Office Systems contract?
It's for a service contract to, for the equipment that we purchased, the ScanPro. It's like a, a device that reads our microfilm that we have had. When we had our microfilm, we have a lot of microfilm that was done previously. Now we're scanning instead of microfilming, but we still have to have a device to read that microfilm that we currently have, so. That was actually purchased out of our perpetuation fund, the ScanPro. And we've had contracts with Imaging Office Systems before, but this is a new one.
All right, gentlemen, we got another contract here for Imaging Offices, Office Systems, an amount of $695. Got a motion to approve.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ronald Arnold, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
Rosetta? Yep. We're getting through our list here. Morning. Oh, shit. Forgot about, hey, Janice? Back in a minute. You'll be putting for a minute. I didn't make it to your party. I just wanted to, this is probably going to be your last commissioners meeting.
I know.
So I just want to wish you the best for your, your new position.
Thank you.
And everything in your years of service from the county.
Thank you.
Been here a long time.
Been a good place to work.
I appreciate everything.
Yeah, you've been a pleasure to work with, obviously. Known you for a long time, even before the elected official days. So you've always been a, um, just a dear to work with and always been very cheerful, very helpful.
Thank you.
And especially with new commissioners, educating us on what all this stuff is, that we're proving without making us feel too bad, so.
Thank you.
Best of luck in the private sector, and thanks for all you've done for Davie's County.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for everything you guys do.
I've known you probably longer than anybody sitting here.
Maybe, yeah.
And certainly appreciate you.
Thank you. Yeah, you probably knew me when I was running around Arnold's with my dad.
He's watching you work while you were sitting up in the office.
Yeah. I used to run around there a lot. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you. If you want to, you can talk. Just present on these. We've got them in the packet. Um, she's giving you the contract summary sheet that is, are associated with the contracts that are in the packet here.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um, yes, there is, um, I had handed out the contract summary sheets there that goes with all of the invoices that we recently received from CSI, our software company. So I'm, um, planning to pay all these out of the perpetuation fund that we have in the Recorder's Office. So it'll be, um, I think you have copies of all the invoices there. But we have the 2023 Software Maintenance, um, $9,000. Title I Annual. Um, and then, um, there's another invoice, um, which has the, um, Annual System Support Agreement, um, the Annual Imaging Loner Support, and the Maintenance Agreement, along with the redaction on that invoice. The Maintenance Agreement in itself, um, is $5,143. And then the redaction in the one, um, is the $1,893.97. For a total on that invoice of $7,036.97. And then, um,
This all is for Computer Systems Inc., CSI?
Right, that is correct. Yes, yes. And then the last one is the Disaster Recovery Service, and it's $986.70. Asking for approval to, um, pay for these through the perpetuation fund. The redaction, um, is usually a four-year. So I, I'm going to discuss that with them, and we usually do that in a four-year term. And, um, I know there was a little bit of an increase. They hadn't increased it for several years. Was an increase, um, for this coming year. So, um, in the email that I had put up there, it stated like what the increase was on that.
So this is, this is an email from CSI to a variety of counties, just explaining why there's an increase.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Rosetta.
Uh-huh, thank you very much.
Do you have any more questions for Rosetta?
No, I do not.
If not, look for a motion to approve the contracts.
Still moved, not all of them.
Yeah, all of them. Ones for $9,000, ones for $5,143. Then was eight, $1,893.97, and the last one's $986.70. So I got a motion from Nathan Gabhart to approve. So I got a motion from Nathan Gabbart for approve. Second, second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are you, you're gonna sign all these, right?
Um, I can.
Yeah, it's got your name on it. It's recent. Yeah, it's got your name on it. So if you sign those. I'll leave it with the packet. You just have to get it from Jen, and then I'll sign these cover sheets for you. Alright, thanks, Rosetta. Appreciate it. I think numbers sixteen get taken off the agenda, ran, or was it still on there?
It's, it's on here. So there's been a draft sent over to the city. We don't have any comments back, but inter-local, my understanding that it was supposed to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars split three ways between city, county, economic development. So we'll wait to see if they've got any feedback or changes, and it'll be on a, for, for your approval, it'll be on a future.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, Grant. Twenty twenty-three buggy permit ordinance. I've been through about every, every scenario with this one. You have any more updates on it?
No, no, I think everything is, is in there. Obviously, the fee's increasing, we're adding the school buggy cart fee, and then obviously the lost or still, lost or misplaced permits will be the same price as the initial, as the initial cost, so.
It makes reference to the sticker system as well, so that.
Yeah. Going from a plate, an actual plate to the actual sticker system now.
Yeah, and a lot of the folks aren't buying new plates anyway. They're just putting the sticker on your plate. They're just putting it on their buggy anyway, so. So we're going from a small sticker to a big sticker.
I think you talked about adding this to an agenda for a year from now.
Yeah.
Or eleven months from now.
Yeah, yeah, we want this to be a recurring.
You went back on the November?
Yeah.
I guess we put it back from November one, first meeting in November.
First meeting in November. That way, if there's any appetite to increase, to adjust these fees, we have time to go out.
When's your guys' safety meeting? You guys just said it.
Typically do it in the fall.
So you have time to talk about it before then? Anything else wrong?
No.
Look for a motion to approve the buggy permit fee increase and go to a sticker.
So moved.
Permit. Got a motion by Nathan Gabbart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we got a S I D C appointment. Gosh, I have a person on here. Form, I guess.
That was on my list, one of the contacts. I think previously it'd been Patty Ball. She is willing to serve unless somebody in the auditor's office or wants to serve.
Did any auditors office want to serve on that?
Patty said she'd be glad to serve again, but thought if somebody else wanted to, it might be a better fit.
Something you're passionate about or not?
Well, I mean, I think having, I mean, obviously Patty would do a phenomenal job. I think having someone in our auditor's office who can have that direct connection with, as much as we work with S I D C on different things. I, I think it'd be great to keep it within the auditor's office.
Fine.
You're fine with that, Jen?
That is fine.
And then you can nominate whoever you like.
Alright. Guess we'll look for a motion to approve Jen Welsh as the appointment for the S I D C commissioners.
Congratulations. I get you a name, bigger name tag.
Ball and told. So look for a motion.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabbart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll sign this form, Jen. I'll let you fill out the rest of it.
Jen, will you also let Patty know? Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Alright, twenty twenty-three appointments. We'll just do like we've always done in the past, is everybody take a sheet and move on, right?
Yeah, on my list, the ones I was responsible for, a couple of questions. These appointments, once we make them, are they for the full term, or can we change those halfway through?
So I mean, all these appointments serve at the, at the pleasure of the commissioners. So I mean, we can, the way I've always understood it is we can remove, they can resign, and they can be removed at any point in time.
Right.
But with costs.
Well, I've got Pam Bartlett. Of course, she's no longer on the school board.
Right.
So if a question comes up, and I've talked to superintendent, he is willing to appoint someone else from Washington if we want Washington to serve on that commission, or do we want to rotate it to another school district? Because it has in the past rotated amongst the schools because it covers the whole county. And North Davis with what's going on up at Crane might be a good fit, but it's a non-voting position.
Yeah, North Davies used to be on it, and they never attended one meeting.
So if your preference is Washington, I can go back and get a name.
Yeah, I don't care which school system it is, but as long as they're, they participate, you know? So. Is it, so it must went from North Davies to Washington, and I don't know if you want to reach out to Barrie?
Or something, maybe.
Because they haven't had one since I've been elected. But I'm, I'm agnostic. I don't care.
Pam's been on it an entire time, I think, since I've been here.
Well, I think Darren Holder was on it first, and then he wasn't able because of his job.
I don't think he ever showed up.
I'll reach out to Barrie and see if they're interested, because I think it should be rotated.
I think if that makes sense, and then they can pass if they'd like.
Because it does impact their funding.
And then.
Everybody else that I had on my list agreed to.
What's the, what's, what's your list?
What's that meeting where you weren't here?
I guess I wasn't here this time.
This is, it's a little bit different from that one.
Okay.
I started with David Gray.
Okay.
And went from David down.
Yeah, I took the last two pages and.
So you guys took it care of for me, huh?
The way you can do them all next year.
There you go.
Now, and then Terry Hildebrand was the only one who stepped down on my list. And then I've reached out to Cindy Barber with her Leadership Academy. But on the community corrections, there are specific requirements for each member.
Right.
So it's gotta be best to have whoever takes Diana's spot to shepherd that. Because it's gotta be either a victim or something like that. So we do have a couple of names interested, so we'll have Diana's successor give us some names.
Okay. Alright. Sounds good. We'll move on then.
Like our Westgate, we're good. We're good there.
Yeah, I want to do some more checking, but as of now, we're good.
Then is there specifics on who is for sure is on here, or who isn't, or what's still vacant, so make sure that we get this correctly?
You guys want to email it, Jen, with what you got, or tell her now? Got any, any changes?
So Terry Hildebrand is, is off.
On the Community Correction Board?
Yeah, that's vacant. And then on Rex Myers, I believe, and he's been, I think he's been passed. Mr. Cosby maybe. I think that was maybe a typo for Rex. I think he's been gone for, I think. So Mr. Cosby, I thought was the. But that was the only ones on my list.
All mine are the same, except you're replacing Patty on my list, and then I'm working on Pam Bartlett's position. Because she's no longer on the school board, but everybody else is okay.
Sounds good. We got our annual Nepfism contract disclosure forms. I think we filled out some of those. I don't think we all got them filled out, just need to make sure we're getting them filled out back to the auditor's office. Cornell's renovation updates.
Yeah, just real quick, December fourteenth, we spent all afternoon. We met with each department head one more time. So which, several times that we've met with them since October. So it was Tom Schaefer, Darren Holder, myself, R Q A W crew, Garmong, and then we meet with, with each department head. Lauren Milton was out. So went through a number of different things. Several of the departments are all on board. You know, a couple of the departments, we made a couple of tweaks. Obviously, this isn't gonna be a one hundred percent buy-in by all five department heads, but I think we have made as many concessions as we can with the physical space that we have. You know, we, I think it's, you know, the footprint we have, the walls we have are gonna stay put, and everything inside, so what's gonna change? We did add some, the, the south walls or south doors, they didn't get overlooked, but we've been so focused departmentally. We, they're, they're gonna make some revisions to those south doors to make them either. I said they, a door is a door, or else it's a wall. So make it one or the other, right? So we can't have a door acting like a wall. So they have some ideas on how they can frame some of that step out, and yet still have an emergency exit on that front door on the south side. So we'll see what that looks like. Now this stuff's final.
Right.
So we met, met with all the department heads. January sixth, they're gonna have the final, the revisions of those comments back to all the department heads. And then in January, they're getting me some dates on when R Q A W and Garmong are available to have a joint meeting. They do have some preliminary budgeted numbers I think I may have sent out. There's a very high level. A little bit more in line, I think, with what we were looking at. So we'll look at having a joint meeting with the council and the commissioners in January. Once I get some dates back from those folks, we'll send those out. And then they want to get the M E Ps, all the, all these acronyms to, they take sixty to ninety days to get all the, all the drawings, all the prints. And then hopefully the beginning of third quarter, they'll be ready to move some dirt. It'll be a, a year and a half.
They think you'll have forbid like in, in the, in the spring?
End of spring-ish is what they're looking at. Sooner we get this thing approved, as I said, by the end of January, this thing will be approved or, or denied.
Right.
Right. That the, the time has come, so. So then they'll get the bids out in ninety days-ish.
As long as we're within a certain parameter of that, our budget, and I think we just need to move forward.
Yeah.
It's not gonna get any cheaper.
I think we're getting close.
On the floor plan, we're to the point where there'll just be maybe minor tweaks made.
Minor tweaks. There is, and the magistrate's kind of turned into a, a little monster of its own, because we we, we cannot have three full-size courtrooms over there. It's just physically not possible. So we're trying to make the magistrate as functional as possible in the existing commissioner's room. And so they're making those revisions now, so. Yep, that's what I got. But yeah, Tom and Matt and Darren Holder have been just, just phenomenal. So we're, we're ready. Bring both bodies back together, and.
Make a decision.
Turn it over.
Turn it over to me, huh?
Yeah.
I'll take it. If you get past that point, I'll take it.
Yeah, we're close. We're really close.
That'll work. That sounds good to me. And Grant, I gave you that form there earlier from a subdivision over in West Boggs. He just want to speak on that behalf for a minute.
Sure. John's here. John, you want to step up to the podium real quick? So.
If one of these here wants to get to it in a minute. My name is John Ware. I live at Four Peach Street, Legody. That's right on Boggs over there. And what I'm proposing is there's a fifteen-foot, a fifteen-foot access way that we're wanting to close, that I, that I own on my property. And what it amounted two years ago was Don Nolan and Mark Jones, when they had this subdivision, they were thinking about selling more lots, and they, if they wanted to leave an access way, if they ever wanted to get to the lake. And the lake does not allow, it has to be adjacent landowners. Other than that, you don't, you cannot build out there and then just go to the lake. You have to go through the park and everything like that. We also checked with the park and everything, and Jamison, he was the superintendent. He's not there right now, but he agreed and approved everything. And he said it doesn't affect them, them whatsoever, that we could do because that's on private property. And we could do what we needed to do to close it, vacate it, whatever needed to be done. And I also, the paper I gave you was an agreement or whatever for all the landowners out there. I have twenty-five of them and all their names and everything. I personally talked to every one of them, and I asked them to sign a paper here or to whatever, what I was wanting to do. And out of the twenty-five, I got eighteen plus the park's approval to go ahead and vacate this, to close it or whatever. That's why we're wanting to do it.
Alright. Yeah, if you can give the, I guess, give Grant the rest of those, whatever you got, and you get copies of it or whatever. We'll leave it to Grant. I mean, we usually, we usually ask you to get on the agenda before you get here, so we, we're kind of aware of what's going on, but we'll take this information and.
Sorry about that. I didn't really know. I've been working with Mark Jones too out of this, and he's the one who wrote this all up and everything. To make it legal and proper and stuff, you know? And I just wanted to know, I'm here to do it the right way, and then what I need to do and get on.
That's fine. Just if you want to just get contact with Grant and give him all the information, and then he can, he can give to the commissioners and go through it.
What we'll do with this, John, is there'll be a, a presentation to vacate the public right of way, assuming this is public right of way, and it looks like it is. And there's just a process that they'll follow.
So do I need to be at the next meeting here then?
Contact Grant. Once he gets through the process, he'll let you know what you gotta do, and then we'll bring it back to a meeting. He'll let you know what time that meeting is.
Yeah, I mean, if everything, and not speaking on behalf of Grant, but if everything's as cut and dry as you presented, and he sees no issues with it, he'll let you know if you need to be at the next meeting.
I don't think that you will be. We needed the approval of a majority of those lot owners, if I recall.
And I have a majority. Like I said, there's twenty-five of them here, and I have eighteen plus the park said to go for it, but I didn't have theirs in writing. They said it doesn't affect them, so they don't even want to get involved. They said just go ahead.
You own lot thirty?
Yes, I do.
Who owns twenty-nine?
Um, Mike Fleming, Charlie Flemings. It's not on his property. Fifteen foot is on my property.
It's all on your property?
I own it. Yep. I own it. So it doesn't affect anybody else.
Is he okay?
It's all on my land, my property. It's all.
Is twenty-nine okay with vacating it?
As I had mentioned it to him, and like I said, I talked to everybody. I talked to everybody on this list. That they, they all, everybody knows it. Everybody's, like I said, there was a few of them, you know, that didn't get back with me. But those ones that really didn't get back with me are the ones who didn't live out there permanently. But I personally called and talked to them, and I'll send everybody one of these, one of these here forms. I send them, email them, or send it or whatever.
Granted, he's got signatures. Does he still have to send out anything else in the mail?
There's two actual moving parts. He's done what he needed to do relative to modifying this plat. And then assuming this is public right of way, and it looks like it is, because fifty years ago, whenever it was, they said the public can use this. So now we'll take those documents, present them to you at a future meeting, and you can either vacate the public right of way or not.
Always in the, always in the past, we always had to have adjoining landowners. Have to send notice out for the public meeting here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know about county, but in the city, you have to have both adjoining landowners agree, and they each get a half of what you're vacating, basically.
Correct.
I already own it. Why would I want to give up my property?
That's right.
So this is just, it was the right for the public to cross over that little strip. He does actually own that little strip.
If that's the case, we're probably not an issue.
Yeah, especially if Boggs doesn't allow non-adjacent landowners, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. We're just trying to do this the right way.
If we get too deep in the woods, Grant will take it from here, and.
Keep in contact with Grant.
Yeah.
You can get Grant's information, and we'll go from there. Alright?
Your thing. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Hey, thanks for waiting. You came to the longest meeting.
It's easy. It doesn't take this long.
That's fine. It's just, I said, it needs to be addressed.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Clear. Yeah, yeah.
You did fine.
It's a dead end. It's there, and all of a sudden somebody use it, get hurt.
Yeah. Alright, sounds good.
Alright, thanks for coming.
Appreciate it. Alright. Gary, you got anything? Thank God. Alright, if not, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabbart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. No, that's fine.